You're doing your research.
No, I don't have to do my research because we own that farm.
What do you mean, Starz? What's the crop?
I don't know what the yields are. Our farmers are actually going to look into it. They kind of tens of thousands of acres. So they may just do an application out of farming this year.
Okay, here we go. Call the order, the meeting of the Rocket, Special Meeting of Rocket Fire Protection District for Thursday, May 2nd, 5:00 PM. Call the order, Trustee Snowblin.
Here.
Trustee Grum.
Here.
Trustee Rogers, here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great father for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal hate and justice for all.
Okay. Public comment. District allows and allocates time for those of individuals who would like the opportunity to address the fire district trustees on any matters not listed on the agenda. Each person addressing trustees is asked to limit their time maximum of three minutes. Does anybody have any comments? Going once, going twice. Number four, consideration of bids of the sale of surplus real estate in Titchcock Highway, Lake Worth, Illinois, per resolution 2019-01 and 70ILCS 705/10AB as supplemented by additional information to Appraiser on April 9, 2019, and from the Appraiser on April 12th. Discussion, action. Brian.
Okay. Just a little history. On April 8th, we opened up. There were some questions about the appraisal. Per the board's direction on April 9th, they sent a letter to the Appraiser asking for clarification. On April 12th, I got a response back to that. As we noted, on April 3rd, we received appraisals from three different entities, Caleb House, Water Street Partners LLC, and Gallery 200 LLC. And subsequently, I sent out correspondence to the three bidders on April 18th advising them, advising them of the additional information relating to the bid and soliciting an updated bid should they choose to submit one. The letter identified the results of the bid opening on April 8th. It identified the information requested by the board in my letter of April 9th to the Appraiser, and it included the reply from the Appraiser dated April 12th. So everybody had, any revised bids were based on the full information. On April 22nd, I had to change the date of the meeting from May 1st to May 2nd in order to comply with the old meetings. So everybody's talking from the session music. Two updated bids were submitted. Caleb House did not submit an updated bid, therefore their original bid stands. I have copies of that that been here for the board's reference. Two other bids were, updated bids were received. I have them here. They haven't been opened yet. The first bid in order of the date received, received on, I think this one here, something I've seen. Received on Friday, the 26th was from Water Street Partners LLC. We'll open that now.
Before we get started too, I would just like to thank those bidders who are still with us. I appreciate the extra effort and time that you had to spend on this despite what I would consider rather irresponsible and unprofessional actions by a member of this board. So again, I thank you for being here and being a part of this. I think those comments are rather inappropriate and not very helpful.
So, just like we did the last time, Water Street Partners, they identified this bid, which is updated bid and supersedes the prior bids as bid action D. Concur with the term of legal notice, the purchase price of $790,790,000. Board, as before, when we finish this, I'll go up with Trustee Snowblin, make copies for this and for the review. The $790,000, the written number is $790,000. The spelled out number, or the cursive number says $690,000. So I'm not sure what that is, but the bid is what the bid is. It provides for a land contract in the amount of $490,000 down payment allowing the district to pay off the mortgage immediately, and $300,000, 120-month loan from the district at 5% interest. It has some additional, other additional provisions. Again, the requirement was for up to a year's use of parts of the building. And I, well, I've got copies here of that too. I can pass this over to everybody. I don't need a copy. Where's the copy from Trustee Snowblin? Where's the copy from Trustee Rogers? Where's the copy from Trustee Grum? So we've got that. That helped out. Okay.
That mistake on the figure was a typo. That cursive, that spell out.
Right.
That should concur with the number.
Okay. And the last. The last bid received is from Gallery 200 LLC. This was hand-delivered to my office on Monday, the 29th, which was the due date in time. So timely surrender. Carol will need to make a copy of this one. So from Gallery 200. Purchase the property. Another one. Paid the sum of $760,000 cursive.
That was a typo.
But, but, but in parentheses after written numerals, $980,000. So we're gonna have to play guess the figure. And there's some additional considerations. We'll make a copy of this so the board can review and consider this. I'll just suggest that the bids are what the bids are. No additional clarifications are gonna be, should, should the board should not consider any additional clarifications or comments because the bids are what the bids are. So we'll both make a copy. I'll make a copy of these two. This and hand this out to everybody, and then the board can make its, do its considerations.
Do you want to make some posters of this for the public if somebody wants it, of the Water Street one?
I could.
Yeah. I mean, just so when we're done, somebody doesn't say, I'd like a copy of it when we, you have it backed up again.
Well, I have my personal information numbers.
So you don't want copies?
I don't want my home address to be out to the public.
Okay.
Let's just leave it here. If they want it, they can, we can give it to them. We'll just redact.
Redact. Okay.
Thank you.
No worries.
That's how it goes in here. You're either going, or it turns around and the heat goes off and it drops like 20 degrees in here.
I guess it'll most big fire engine in here.
I know. Same in the summer. Close. You turn the air on in here?
Oh, what areas are it just?
Well, not the base.
Not the base. Dan, did the appraisal change at all? And what was the down amount on?
$630,000. We have copies of that in business. We have that in business. So there's one for you, and one for you, and one for you, and one for me. And as a point of clarification, while I said that the board shouldn't question, I do need to see clarification. Mr. Havy, you clarified that in your bid, the bid to bid amount is actually the, what, the numeric, the number's written out, $790,000, $790,000, not the written $690,000? Okay, let me fix that here. And Mr. Kalujian, having given Mr. Havy the opportunity to clarify his, his proposal, your, your proposal, your bid has a similar disconnect. The written number says $760,000, whereas the number's saying $980,000. What's correct?
The $960,000.
$980,000. Okay, now that we've clarified that, board, you've received three bids. The bids stand as they are with the terms. What the board should consider are the terms that we included in the resolution for the terms that were approved by the board for the sale of the property. Any additional, and for any additional terms or conditions that they choose to offer are theirs, but not part, not necessarily part of the bid. That which is in the resolution and that which is in the additional information, the additional information clarifying the post-transaction use of the properties.
Trustee Snowblin, do you have any comments, thoughts, anything on bids?
Again, not to be terribly repetitive, but I'm not, not in favor of this board proceeding with this, but clearly, I think one, looking at the two bids, one bid certainly seems to be more attractive than the other. That would be Mr. Kalujian's.
Is it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you have no questions about, my only que, or my question as we work down the row here is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try it. Kalujian, is that correct? Okay. Considering the appraisal price is $630,000, and yours is $980,000, is yours a cash offer?
Oh, yes. No mortgage.
There'll be no mortgage, there'll be no contingencies, there's no bank financing, anything. Okay?
Regardless.
That's all right. I asked Mr. Kalujian if, sorry if I'm mispronouncing it.
No, that's all right.
If his bid had any contingencies on financing. And he said, no, it's a cash offer. 14 days from May 2nd, Special Meeting. If the board chooses to move forward with either one of these, Mr. Kalujian, you said that in yours here, that it would be valid for 14 days. The odds of this board finishing all the contract is probably not.
Unlikely.
Unlikely. So are you, is it 14 days? If it's not done, you're out?
If you don't decide today and it goes on over 14.
No, no, I'm saying the conclusion of the contract is gonna be.
No, not the conclusion. Just your decision-making.
Okay.
Because I don't want to go back to another appraisal of the number and this and that.
Got it, got it. Trustee Grum?
Yeah, I'm looking at these, and I suppose there's a, in terms of the best financial situation for the, for the district, I think that has to be taken into consideration. Certainly, I'm concerned as to, you know, whether or not that can be provided, but.
I would, I would agree, and my, my opinion on this is, I, I think it's neglectful for the, the board that's come this far and has an appraisal on the building of $630,000, excuse me, $630,000 to walk away from an offer of $350,000 over the appraised amount. I can't even imagine why an incoming board would do anything other than say, woo-hoo, we got almost a million dollars for the building. Well, and as was just expressed, that is, if we wait and leave it for the incoming board on the 20th. Right. We're over the 14 days and the gentleman is out. Right. Any other comments?
For what it's worth, the, a cash offer has to be, you know, with the amount, I think has to be preferable over asking the district to self-finance a mortgage. If you're trying to get rid of the building, get into basically the lending business, I think it's really not, there's too much risk and not really very appropriate, but.
Well, had, had the numbers been really close, I think there would probably be a discussion to be had, but your 100 and, over $100,000 difference, I, I don't.
As I said, it's kind, it's kind of moot, but, you know.
Right.
Just the idea of taking a land contract and, you know, self-financing.
Can I make a comment, please?
Sure.
The, the one thing I'd like to point out, which is very uncomfortable about this, is that this delay and these refined and revised proposals came about as a result of one of the trustees not acting in the best interest of the trust of the board.
That's your opinion, and.
I'm gonna continue to speak if I may. Mr. President, these comments are out of order. Thank you. But you've received revised bids as a result of someone delaying what should have been.
Public comment is over, and I believe the attorney said.
I'll run this, and you have, you have piped up more than once when I've not had open comment. So if you'd liked to video, that's fine, but I'll take care of the meeting, okay?
If you'd like to go back to the video, I only talked during a public comment, but.
You can go back to the video all you want. The gentleman asked me if he could speak, and, and I said yes.
Your meeting's, your meeting's being run out of order.
Okay, well.
Even the attorney said so.
You know what? You'll have your opportunity in another few weeks. All right.
Let's get, let's get back to, let's get back to where we were. You, you talked about the three bids.
Right.
That were, you were, that were tendered, you talked about. You have, you have options, essentially two. You can act on any of the three bids today. You, you don't have to act, and you don't have to act at all. You can act on the three, or you can defer action to the old meeting on May 13th.
Right. Where I was going with, with this, I wanted to hear from both the trustees on this, and I will tell you, although it is very good for the district, there's, there's no doubt, it, it pains me terribly to see both these gentlemen have to up their bids because we're here now. At the last meeting, not here to strike up a fight with anybody, if we had known what you knew four days earlier, we would have never ripped those bids open, and we would have retold the people, and it's, it's kind of unfair to both of them, but on their own accord, they, they've upped their bids. So I, I think it was wrong to not let us all know what you knew. I think that it.
I had copies of the appraisals. I wasn't the one who found that issue. It was brought to my attention.
Right.
Four days earlier.
Four days earl, right. Four days earlier, you said. If you'd said, Dan, I just walked in here and noticed this, I get that, Carl, I really do. And I'm not looking for a battle here with you at the table. I just wish that we had known, not for me, not for Bob, and not for Brian, but for these two gentlemen. It, it was really unfair for them both to work hard on what they thought was a good proposal, and then have them opened, and then get dropped on, them each getting to see what each other did, and then go back. Clearly from the district's end, it ended up working out pretty darn good, you know, from, from the original proposals.
I think what it did is it took a bidding process and it turned it into an auction.
Right.
And I think that's unfortunate, and I think it was a big mistake.
Legally, that's untrue. I understand you want to refer to that in shorting, but colloquially, but that's not true. But anyway.
Well.
What action now?
That's what I'm getting to. Like you say, there's basically two things to do. You, you've got a bid of, of almost a million dollars here. There's a part of me that certainly says, how can the district not accept this bid? If the new board comes in and says, we're not taking a million dollars, I'd get good for them. So that's, that's my thoughts. You would, you would rather forego the bill, the bid of a million dollars and let the other board come in and start their own process on this?
My position on this is perfectly clear.
I just ask, with, with the possibility of losing this bid. With the possibility of losing this bid, you're still here?
I've made my position perfectly clear. I do not think this board should be doing this at this time. You've gone down this road. It's really something that, that should be decided by the new board as to whether they want to sell the building, whether they want to try to lease the building, what they want to do with it.
Well, we've tried to lease the building and had literally no results on leasing the building. What do you want to do? Carl says leave it. What do you want to do?
Well, I think it would be extremely irresponsible, which.
I, it surprised me, but I agree.
Those comments, again, are very inappropriate and not very.
He's saying it's irresponsible to not act on a, a million dollar bid.
Who was the comment after that?
Well, I guess we'll, I'll throw out the motion and see where it goes. How's that? I'll make a motion to offer Mr., or to accept Mr. Kalujian's bid for $980,000 cash deal. And I guess wish you all the best to work with the attorney to get this closed up and hope that the new board, when they come in, decide to not pull the, no pun intended, rug out from under you.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor by Trustee Rogers?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Trustee Grum. We'll roll home load on this. Trustee Snowblin?
Nope.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Grum?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Motion passes. Do you have anything else? In that case, at 5:26, I will make a motion for adjournment.
What, what time?
5:26 by Rogers, seconded by Snowblin on favor.
Aye.
Congratulations. You guys got a good deal.
Thank you for being part of it.
I'd love to see if the new board feels responsible or not.
You seem to can't, can't look away from that.
No, sir. I, I think it's very irresponsible.
Aye, aye.
Best of luck. I hope the new board finishes the deal with you.
Uh, I don't know if I have. It doesn't mean.
Would you put a second on your.
Thanks for coming.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I, I mean. Your praise is. If you listen to what you wrote and what I wrote back to you.
No, I wouldn't have.
There were reasons they don't.
I didn't trust you.
But no, I, that's fine, so, please.
Would you realize you were perfectly lost to a lot of this? Oh, did you? Okay. Well, I told Ryan, because he's gonna start hunting, he's gonna be digging up the ground, he's gonna be putting up in the sea. And I said, then you, you run yourself into certain, you finally realize what you have to do. Are you still going out? I think I can, yeah. We're gonna stop at Lake House. I mean, okay. Well, thank you. I wish you all the very best, anything between now and then that you want from me, I'll give you my number, if you want to walk through the building, I'll be happy to. I will give you names and numbers of other people in the service, which we see real. In the point guy that has been extraordinary.
Oh, we don't, we want service.
Oh, yeah, I'll give you all that stuff, I'll give you the name of the, the people that service the general that have contracts here on that. I'll be happy to share whatever information.
The law says members of the public tend to be speaking.
I am so sorry.
Is what it is.
If I had any, I wouldn't have. I just got.
Have you got time?
We'll do.
Email me, email is better, because God knows where I am any time of the day.
You don't even know where you're at.
Oh, you, you have. You thought I had enough of hospitals before, oh, no, no, we, we didn't get, we had a couple more quick ones coming up in Chiladi.
You don't have that one in the paper, do you?
Each one, yeah. The chief, the chief called me like that, but it is, I'm the one, who thinks it's so. Oh, yeah, that's what we want.
So, again, anything I can do to account that, I will be more than happy to help you with.
Well, it's, it's, it's a problem, I mean, buildings.
I, I, again, I'm, I'm literally two minutes away. Do you have my cell phone worth? Dan Reynolds, obviously, and it's eight four seven. Six forty. One eight. But that's the mark, yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll share, I will share anything and everything that you like, you know.